And welcome to this March nineteen twenty twenty four Committee of the Whole. We have no sign in, uh, we have no sign ins on the sign in sheet this evening. Therefore, um, for public comment, uh, we will just move forward into our, uh, staff presentations. And the first one that we have on the agenda this evening is the creation of an in-house emergency financial assistance program. And for that, we will defer to Human Services Director Natalia Nieves.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. May here. It's members of the City Council and residents and peers. I, um, want to tell you a little bit about, uh, our proposed, um, emergency financial assistance program. My hope is that we have a brief overview of the program, including what we've had with Salvation Army and Hope Fund, discuss some of the challenges and gaps in resources associated and discuss that proposed solution, criteria for that, some benefits, and of course, entertainment questions. Currently, when the townships, churches, and other nonprofits are unable to assist our residents, they come to us and we have access to, uh, applying for Salvation Army funds on their behalf. This year alone, we actually exhausted our funds that they allocate for us. We've given over $4,000 and, um, of course, to keep anonymity of clients, who's wanted to illustrate an example, certainly six examples of the folks that we helped through Salvation Army, um, as of today. Rental assistance, they started really strong with giving $900 and then as, as funds were depleted, it went down to 600 for rental assistance, which is still tremendously helpful. And gift cards and help with groceries. And the reasons why some of these folks came for that help is, is pretty varied. I can give examples. Some have fled domestic violence as we have a really robust police social program established. Other, others came for, um, having survived, uh, there's child disclosure of sexual abuse. Others, um, due to a, um, a sp- loss of a spouse. Trying to think, I'm, I'm looking at them and I, I can kind of think of the clients. Uh, another one was a person that had recently lost their job unexpectedly. And another one, the most recent one was, um, actually helped through, through Hope Fund because we thought that was very, kind of out of the box. Hope Fund is the other program that we have. And it's been established since the end of twenty twenty one or so after that major fire. And, um, funded only through donations and small grants. Uh, this year so far, we've given $5,327.74. Folks needed help with mortgage and rent. And, um, a family who had a tragedy with their child needed emergency beds and clothing. They, these are all crime victims, uh, survivors of crimes only that our, our team is, is working with. So that, that's where the, the variations come from. And this, this last one really highlights the, highlighted for me the need for this program that I'm proposing today. It was a, a family that somehow the church that they attended had helped them, uh, for one month and they really couldn't help her, the family any, any longer because of their, their child was diagnosed with leukemia. And so it meant that she, the mom had to stop working to take care of, um, multiple medical appointments, et cetera. And so, um, you know, kind of surviving, making their best, um, to survive on only one income. So they were very desperate when they called and it was like, gosh, it's not quite a crime victim, but it's someone with such a horrific crisis that I went ahead and powwowed with all the, um, the Hope Fund team, um, and we all said, absolutely, it's, you know, we have the funds and why not? So some of the challenges in general are that Salvation Army is, is extremely lengthy of an application. It's about eleven pages. And it also requires that the, the landlords complete two and, and sign two documents. Many times they refuse. It's hard to understand for them that people have a one-time need for, you know, for this emergency funds and so they don't sign it and so the crisis becomes bigger. Um, the processing time for Salvation Army funds is pretty varied and unpredictable and often lengthy. So it used to be like one, two weeks. Fast forward to right now, it varies between six weeks and oftentimes six months. And the, the amounts, um, offered vary between 600 and 900. With the cost of living right now, that's, that's really low. And, and again, we exhausted those funds, so. And it does require the client make the payment, the remaining balance before they actually send a payment, which is very difficult, um, for people. And of course, we have Hope Fund, um, but again, it's been very limited to, to crime victims and residents with really critical situations. And that's, as we know, this is donation-based. So what, um, we're proposing is, um, you know, just kind of going back to what we had done, I believe in twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one, I apologize, I don't recall exactly, but the, the city gave a donation of $30,000 to Salvation Army. That was twenty-five and then the five from the program that the city had, uh, for many years, the $5,000. So made it together for 30,000 and that in turn helped us go back to the community and, and distribute this funds to the, those that needed it the most. We went through those funds very quickly as well. And so because, you know, we have the Hope Fund, we, we are established. We, um, the, um, accounts are reconciled monthly by our, with our finance department support. I'm proposing that we have our in-house emergency assistance program and we use, uh, funnel the, the funds through, uh, donation to Hope Fund like it was, uh, with Salvation Army a few years ago. And so it would be like a separate fund kind of within Hope Fund to assist the residents that are in crisis beyond the crime victims. Everybody got copies of the criteria and the document that, um, highlights further. However, just some highlights are that they may be, residents may be able to apply. Once every twenty-four months, the assistance would be for rent or mortgage payments not to exceed 1,700, which is about the average amount of rent, um, in this area. And for utilities not to exceed 500. Again, this would be the last resort after they've worked with the township, after they've worked with the churches, with the nonprofits. And, uh, it is limited to, it's intended to alleviate the needs of, uh, for financial hardship by a critical and an acute situation, not a chronic situation. For example, someone who, whose living arrangement is no longer feasible and, um, they need like different housing arrangement. And, uh, the residents that request, uh, assistance have the, kind of the unique caveat that they would be required to work with our community social worker, who would really do a very comprehensive psychosocial needs assessment to determine how can their life be improved? What services, what linkage is still needed? All the way from financial budgeting to, um, job finding, um, and applying for public benefits, et cetera. And the checks that, or, or payments would be done directly to the landlord mortgage company utility, real similarly to what we do already with Hope Fund. Of course, the benefits that, that there would be basically very limited wait time and to avoid, avoid larger crisis situations. What happens a lot of times is the townships require a five-day eviction notice, uh, before even considering an application. People don't want to get to that. You know, it's very scary to, to have such notice if you have children at home. Even without children. And, and we would not require paperwork to be signed by the landlord or mortgage company. We would just simply make the payment directly to them, uh, upon qualifying, of course. And again, we would evaluate and assess the person's unique situation, strengths, areas of growth, and offer that comprehensive, um, case management. That is all I had. I will thank you for your time and energy and, um, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Nieves. Uh, is there any council member that has a question for Dr. Nieves at this time? Yes, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks for the information, Doctor. On this too, I know when we originally discussed this in twenty twenty-one, one of the benefits we did sort, or Salvation Army was because they did have like the verification that they've tried with public aid, they've tried with the township, all that. Well, that criteria, I might have missed it in the, the paperwork, like at the write-up. I feel like that we, at the time, the council wanted the city to be kind of like the funding of last reserves. So through your applicant, would still make sure that they've tried to reach out to the township, they've tried other resources. So it still is kind of that last resort.
Exactly. And, and furthermore, we would make sure that we have kind of different processes for us. We have clients, residents sign a releases of information so that we can actually communicate with those community stakeholders and say, when was the last time they applied with you? Do they qualify again? Do you have a different fund that they have not tapped into? Just to make sure that we truly are the last resource.
And then, can I just add a second one? And I know we exchanged some conversations on this prior to one of our last discussions. And I don't want to put you on the spot because I know you probably don't have numbers in front of you. What I had a question about before, when we talked about the, the clinic, Dr. Nieves and I exchanged some conversations, is I understand, and it might be for chief and think like, we offer this to crime victims, that the crime may have been committed in Rolling Meadows jurisdiction, but they are not a resident. Is that the same way this program could work? I know this is for more than just crime victims, but that if it were a crime, like are people that are not residents eligible for this excluding that they were a victim of a crime in our jurisdiction?
Only residents would qualify.
Okay. So it wouldn't be just if a crime was committed in our jurisdiction and police and detectives are working on that. They, but they could live someplace else. This would solely be for residents?
That's where Hope Fund is for crime victims only because we recognize that many crime victims would actually benefit from moving to a different place in order to lessen the trauma reactions for them not to be found by the offender, et cetera. So that's why Hope Fund has that. I think these funds, of course, with your direction, they would be, um, kind of earmarked separately, just for residents in crisis. Does that make sense?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Doctor.
Alderman McHale?
So I think Alderman O'Brien kind of covered what I was going to ask. But, so my understanding is the $30,000 that we typically earmark to Salvation Army will now go to Hope Fund adjacent.
Right.
Like to, so the Hope Fund will still have their mechanism of fundraising and we can still put money into that from the community. And then this thirty is from the city budget and you guys to kind of cut out the red tape and not get to a five-day eviction notice so that these, you know, crime victims or whatever's going on can move on with their lives and not be so stressed out.
Yes.
That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Koller and then Alderman Budmans?
Thank you for your presentation. I don't have anything against the program, just a couple of questions about how we manage it. How many, what is our usual annual request that we get? Oh, dollar mode.
I, I wouldn't be able to quantify that because we've only had crime victims. I could, as, as a guess, between twenty thousand, thirty thousand or more, but because we've only, you know, pre this year, we've only worked with, with crime victims. I wouldn't be able to give an accurate number for the rest of the, the residents in crisis.
That's fair. That's fair. I'm kind of, I'm, I'm just trying to think of the process here. Somebody's in crisis, who manages? Figure out, if somebody has this crisis going on, such as the one you gave the example of with a child that's ill, it seems like the last thing they have time for is how to find all the agencies that can help them and which one's going to help me first and which one's going to help me last. Is there somebody we have that manages kind of the whole picture for them and says, okay, here's what we can do? Not just the city, but, you know, the county, we know the, is, is there some way to manage that for them?
That's literally what our community social worker does.
Okay.
She is meeting with this resident weekly and they are making small goals toward a larger goal of being able to, you know, be financially independent. And so, just to give an example, kind of what that really looks like. She's making, uh, they're making a plan for food security, right? So they're weekly going to the different food pantries in the area, um, to, to supplement that, um, food and she's, uh, looking into assisting with jobs. First, you can find a job that can potentially be part-time or from home. We are, what else are we doing? We've, we, we had our releases of information with the township to have that conversation about how have you helped? And can you, do you have another fund to, to support? They already indicated that they had, uh, exhausted, um, their ability to support. And then we are working with other church partners that we have kind of unofficial agreements that they can support when cases that, that are like these come about. So we're going to also reach out to them. So we make it, sometimes people come with like lists and they're like, oh my God, I have to, here's all these great resources, I'd have to find the time to do this. So no, we come, she comes once a week, they meet for an hour, they call places together, they, um, complete applications together and they make a plan, um, so that it's not so overwhelming. And she's also going to be working with our mental health therapist for the, you know, for psychosocial, uh, stress that this brings to the family.
Okay. So then my, my, my last question right now, good program, I like what I hearing. We're the last resort, but the others are holding them up. It seems to be, we should might think about reversing that and saying, in a real emergency, I can give you access to some funds to handle this today because you're going to take two, three weeks or six months. It sounds ridiculous. Six months is, what does that do anybody in a crisis, right? I think we might want to think about maybe being the first resort if necessary in the project. Because if your program, did you anticipate the process to be with days, within days?
As soon as the people can, this, you know, the residents can, could get to us and complete the, the paperwork to really understand and the, the meeting, right, to, to really understand their situation. Yeah, I mean, upon us approving, finding this to be really, uh, legitimate, um, acute stress, critical incident or crisis, we could write the check immediately. Like I have for Hope Fund, have the checkbook and, and, uh, another one of our staff members as well.
Yeah, and so my only thing to consider in the project is that if it's at a point where I know all these at the place we can get money, let's see what we can do there first, we get in there and say, we can do this today, get you started, but we'll also get these other things in the queue to get you going. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Alderman Budmans?
So I've been a huge supporter of the Hope Fund. And, and I have a little bit of a concern. Here's the concern. Because we had a separate agency, an outside agency, I felt like when we were talking about the taxpayers' dollars, the $30,000, that there was a level of protection for our staff so that nobody could ever come back on our staff and say that it wasn't properly distributed. So, um, while I'm, while I'm willing to, to go along and, and to say, yes, we could do it in-house, I think that there needs to be protections in place for our staff. It needs to be more than one person. It needs to be a group of three people. Some kind of a, some kind of a situation where, um, where I, I, I wholeheartedly believe in the integrity of our staff. I've never questioned that or how the Hope Fund was distributed ever. However, those were donated funds and not taxpayer funds. And so with taxpayer funds, I want to make sure that no taxpayer could ever come back later and say, you know what? This donation was made and it's, it was for a political reason or it was for whatever. Or it wasn't made because of a political reason. And so, so to eliminate that shadow of doubt amongst any taxpayers ever, I would really want to have the safe, a safe system set up for staff so that they wouldn't be subject to that, um, to that kind of, um, accusation unfairly and, and have to, and have to suffer as a result of that. So what can you do to, to set it up so that distributions made from the $30,000 separate fund are at least, um, handled by a multitude of staff members? And, and so that, so that there's a check and balance and that, and that the, and that the staff has afforded the, the safety of saying, hey, this was not my individual decision, it was a group decision, it was made on this date by these three people.
I could share a little bit of some thoughts and I'm sure City Manager has some as well. We have a process, mini-process already where, um, we sign, uh, with the presence of another staff when we sign the, the checks. And let's say if it's, um, Dee's client versus my client, I have her write the check and vice versa. And then we also in paper, we have an application that we fill out for our clients. We don't make them fill it out. And then we write on there approved how much and who was present. But certainly, I, I appreciate the, where this comes from, I really do. And, and I welcome any and all ideas about how to, you know, have that future responsibility.
Yeah, it's so, please don't take it as a personal thing. It's not, it's only meant for, actually for your protection because I don't want to have anybody, a taxpayer later come back and say that the, that the process wasn't handled correctly. It, you know, that there were taxpayer, taxpayer funds distributed because one person said, yeah, go ahead and give them that money. So however you guys can do that, I'm assuming this is going to come to us in a, in a,
In a resolution.
In a resolution. So if you could figure out a way to make that happen in, in the, between now and the resolution, I'd really appreciate that.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmans. I'll also have, uh, City Manager Sabo talk a little bit more about financial controls. And as necessary, we can, um, have Director Tockington supplement as well.
Yep. So with respect to the Hope Fund and its operations, it operates as a 501(c)(3) entity. However, the reconciliations are done on a monthly basis with our finance department staff. So in addition to Natalia's team working on the, um, on the working side of, of the Hope Fund, there are also extra sets of eyes that are looking at the receipts and matching them up to any expenditures as they come in through the monthly statements. A mechanism that I'd suggest and we can work on this for the resolution when it comes back to the council is similar to the way that we do, um, personnel changes within the city where, um, the Human Services Department works on the application, makes the recommendation. It then goes on to our finance director and myself for secondary sign-off so that there's multiple layers of review. And that can happen really quickly. Right now, we're, we're working through this fairly quickly on other types of approvals, requisitions, purchasing, things like that. And in a similar vein, as we handle our purchasing, we can similarly approach it with, uh, with these types of distributions for the, uh, $30,000 that would be allocated.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Yes, of course, Alderman McHale.
One more thing I wanted to just kind of ask. So, so far you said that we've already used our fourth, almost $4,000 from the Salvation Army. And what's our limit on that? Three? We're over?
They usually, they're really, really generous, that allocate between three and 4,000. I think this year we got 4,000.
We have already hit that.
Yes, 4,050.
And the Hope Fund, five, over five.
Yes.
So we're almost 10 grand in its march.
And we're not even,
What happens to the rest of the year?
That's why I'm here.
Hey, once funds are depleted at that point, we're, we're in a position where we cannot approve further funds or we could come back and request additional funds. But based on the numbers that were provided, they're typically finite. And as we did when we were working with the, uh, with the Salvation Army, when we were making the $30,000 contribution, we can provide reports to the council to provide status updates on where we are with these distributions through the course of the year.
Well, I mean, we made the distribution to Salvation Army $30,000. That $30,000 did end up going to our residents.
It did, yes. And I believe we use the thirty each year that we made it to them.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there any additional questions regarding this program? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Nieves. Uh, and at this time, we'll move on to the Electrical Aggregation Program update. And to that, I will defer to Rob Savage, our graduate intern in community development, and he will present to the council this evening.
Good evening, council members. I'm Rob Savage. As Laura mentioned, I'm the Community Development Graduate Intern. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the updates to the Municipal Electrical Aggregation Program. A little bit of a complicated one, but hopefully we can walk through it. So Electrical Aggregation allows municipalities to select a wholesale provider that's not ComEd. The default, of course, would be ComEd ordinarily. Uh, this allows us to kind of procure cheaper energy for residents and businesses. Residents can opt out if they find a better offer. So there's nothing binding, binding your residents into this. It's simply a service that we can offer and try and save residents some money. So the program was implemented in 2012 by referendum, some of you may remember. This, um, this functioned very well for over a decade now. For instance, uh, the previous contract that we were, that's about to expire with MC Square was roughly two cent, two and a half cents cheaper than ComEd, um, for residents. So this contract is unable to be renewed due to some state legal regulation. So due to the current market fluctuations and price volatility in the energy sector, we're finding that it's we're finding that it's increasingly difficult to find these kinds of good deals. ComEd is kind of coming down, so we're getting better price competitiveness from them, but ultimately, um this new, this upcoming strategy is being discussed in the Sustainability Plan, basically the ability for us to evaluate evaluate procurement and additional renewable resources whenever it solicits proposals for community choice aggregation. So traditional aggregation, and as we've been practicing, it allows the city to leverage its economy of scale. We have increased purchasing power and collective purchasing to draw a competitive price from from wholesale energy markets. Unfortunately, again, while this has rewarded consumers with significant savings, we are starting to see the 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 boundary of that, and savings are limited, there's no guarantee of favorable pricing in the future. So the alternative that we're exploring is price match aggregation. Residents and businesses will pay the exact ComEd rate, so that's the standard retail rate. They can expect very stable pricing under this scheme, so uh no hikes, no surprise fees, and they can still opt out just as before. The difference between the ComEd rate and the price to serve creates a small pool of resources that the city can direct. And so this small pool of reserve could in fact be rebated or something like that, but it's incredibly small per capita, we're talking about maybe a couple of cents to up to a dollar per person per year. So just to lay it out as clearly as I can, you can send them right the ComEd retail tariff. Everyone's on a base price, it's consistent, it's reliable. The alternate power provider, cost to serve, there is typically a bit more variability, but we can aggregate that, we bundle all those prices together, and then we give them these savings. So we typically see a lower price than the ComEd retail rate. Price to match aggre- price match aggregation, rather, the ComEd rate has basically stayed the same, very stable, and the alternate provider, uh there is still a bit more variability, but we're essentially charging everybody for the ComEd rate, and there are small price differences, anything below that gets fed into the into the fund. So um they would be paying the same either way. The alternative price match aggregation, so two options refer to the Environmental Committee by staff for program update, using price match aggregation. First one is the purchase, is to purchase renewable energy credits or REX. The second option was to obtain a civic contribution, which would be a cash. So what are REX? REX are a green energy accounting system. It's a tool that certifies and tracks clean energy being introduced into the grid. So essentially, if a windmill or a solar panel produces one megawatt hour of renewable energy and that's fed into the grid, that's gonna equate to one REX. These can only be used once, so they're not really tradable traditionally, and they essentially provide an evidence of green energy within our grid, and also validates and hopefully produces a positive feedback loop where we can slowly demand more green energy from the sector. So let's talk about the first option, additional renewable energy allocation. So PJM currently supplies about six percent renewal renewables into our grid, and at today's rate, can we can purchase an extra five percent in REX. So the city allocates the savings amount in uh to purchase renewable energy certificates. REX represent currently about three point four gigawatt hours of energy, so that's the equivalent to about fifty five hundred barrels of oil, or five hundred and twenty-nine cars on the road at average mileage, four hundred and sixty-three homes electricity usage, it's a substantial amount of energy. So by pursuing this option, um the city would be recognized as an EPA Green Power Partnership Community, so there's quite a significant amount of reputation associated with this. The option two, so the city could elect to use that cash and use it as a contribution towards local sustainability objectives. So this could be much more of a grassroots type approach, you likely have a very visible, very measurable kind of impact on a very local scale, but you're quite limited in your large-scale impact. So if the goal is in fact to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, this may be less effective. So the the staff's recommendations to the Environmental Committee was indeed to purchase REX, and the Environmental Committee unanimously voted in favor of of REX, but there was there was a bit of trepidation and some critique, and the most, the most vocal critique was basically that um there wasn't a significant enough framework if we were to take a cash advance to, for it to be spent on the intended item. So we weren't really sure that necessarily if we did take that fifteen thousand dollars or thereabouts and spent it on community grassroots sustainability objectives, that it would definitely happen, it could just kind of be swallowed back into the system. So one member expressed that residents may not support the city creating excess funds from the aggregation program. In the end, they all did, voted unanimously for it, though, except for one present. So staff recommends updating the Plan of Operation and Governance to be more consistent with current market conditions. Just reiterate, the the flexibility in the in the market at the moment has made it quite difficult to obtain great pricing and and stable pricing, so um for us to have the flexibility to negotiate more flexible arrangements with contractors, with with energy supply, could be advantageous for residents' pocketbooks. Also, the current POGO is specific to one consultant, so the city should preserve options for multiple consultants. This is going to be raised in the next two public council meetings as required by state law, state statute rather. So the recommended action, the City Council should discuss this item and direct staff as to this, as to if the city should pursue a price match program with more competitive rates assured. If yes to a, whether the city proceeds should be directed to the procurement of REX or retained as a civic contribution. We're also recommending to update the POGO to match current uh, oh, oh. Okay, so, let's take some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Can you just put that last slide back up for the council? Since we've got an agenda here, but before we dive into that, were there any general questions regarding the presentation from council this evening? Yes, Alderman O'Bren.
I just have one, and thank, great presentation, either the REX or the one, like the fifteen thousand, both of those are a one-time thing. It's not fifteen thousand annually where the REX is only a one-time, it's annual.
So, yeah, it's it's an ongoing accounting system where based, on an annual basis, we can purchase more REX or contribute to the fund.
Oh, okay, my apologies, I thought it was a one-time thing.
Yeah, so it would be basically as it's kind of taken out from the remainder of those those bills, so that that would accrue.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions about, or general questions about the program before we look at the agenda? Yes, Alderman Budmass.
So by doing this instead, are we, the fact that the aggregation program exists by result of referendum, if we were to re-up our aggregation program, would we have to go back to a referendum, or would we be able to just say that we've we've moved to this, and then we can move back to our aggregation program, assuming that common with that is in, let's say the, right now, that's, we'll call it a sign wave, and maybe in five years, when they think nobody's looking again, the rates will, once again, will be advantageous for us to purchase on behalf of our constituents.
Yes, I'm gonna have City Manager Rob Savo answer that since it was like
Thank you.
I figured, go ahead.
So the city would not be required to go back to referendum, the referendum question posed was to allow the city to procure energy on behalf of residents. And with the approval of that referendum, that gave us and opened up the opportunity for the city to establish what is known as the POGO, the Plan of Operation and Governance, and thereafter to purchase and procure this energy. The Plan of Operation and Governance is important, and the reason that we bring it to the council, as the state statute requires, is it's the governance document that identifies what the aggregation program is doing. So how is the city procuring that energy? It's within the city council's authority to be able to amend that POGO, to make it such that either the city is purchasing electricity that saves consumers money, or you can amend it to allow for this price matching option, it does not require you to go back out to referendum. It does keep the ability for us to go with either or option, a number of different communities throughout the Chicago region, because of the volatility in the electric aggregation market, have gone to this price matching and price following approach, but it does allow for the city to have the flexibility. To answer your question, no, we wouldn't need to go back to referendum on this.
Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions regarding the general structure of what we're considering this evening? Okay, so then the first question that staff has for the council this evening is whether or not to pursue a price match program until more competitive rates are assured. Any comments on that? Okay, then we can do a straw vote for you, Mr. Savage, if you'd like, and then we can continue to, before we move on to the the flow chart here for B and C. So for those in favor of a price match program until more competitive rates, all right, that's unanimous, we have five in favor. So that brings us to item B, whether the proceeds should be directed to either the procurement of REX or attained as a civic contribution. And I will start off this conversation by stating that in the past, when we have looked for green initiatives related to infrastructure, fifteen thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. As far as other projects that have been grassroots from the city, we've had a tremendous amount of support for native plantings, we have our annual duck race where the community actually supports funds for native plantings and other projects that currently exist. So I do echo the the comments that were provided this evening regarding the framework at this time, already being pretty much at capacity for where our volunteers are at. However, that's something for the council to cons- that's something for the council to consider, if not now, then in the future. Alderman Kohler, as the Chair of the Environmental Committee, was there anything else that you wanted to add regarding this?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to say that we had a long discussion on this, and System Manager Cole was part of that discussion. Rob, you were there too, right?
Quickly, yeah.
That was our show. We had a long discussion on this, the two options we had. The REX pushes up significantly and gets that recognition from the EPA as a green community, which we thought was an important thing, to distinguish Rolling Meadows as really taking this sustainability concept serious. And when we got into discussions of retaining it as a civic contribution, the fifteen thousand dollars correct, we said, you know, is that a lot, or is... And the other thing we we kind of thought was, well, the sustainability plan is really becoming part, the the task in there for being integrated into the regular capital planning budget and everything else, so what does, what do we take in and out would be too complex for the thing, since we've already got a lot of this stuff baked into the capital plans for the city and and other things, so we didn't really quick, got a sense of, well, what would we do with it if we got it? So we really preferred to get the REX and get the recognition from the EPA and put us as a leading city in the area, as opposed to the fifteen thousand dollars, which we be kind of fuzzy as to what would we do with this, so.
And as far as impact as well, right? So with that, were there any other questions or points of discussion regarding which of these directions the council would like to pursue? Okay, then in that case, we can start with a straw vote for the first one, all those in favor of the proceeds being directed to the procurement of REX. It's unanimous, so you have five in favor? And then for the third item, then updating the POGO, I don't think that's a straw vote, it sounds like we will then have city staff pursue that for the next city council meetings.
Yes, correct, yeah. If I could comment really quickly on next steps, so we will include the POGO on the next city council meeting agenda to conduct the public hearing. Once we complete the public hearing process, then it'll advance to approval of a resolution to amend the POGO. Procedurally, with the way that the program works, aggregation program works, our current contract expires at the end of May. After that period, we go into a waiting period, so all of the accounts would roll back to ComEd for a six-month wait. Thereafter, we can then commence the program. Right now, in the state of Illinois, there's one vendor that's providing these price match programs, which is the same vendor that we're currently with on our aggregation program. Under the Illinois Commerce Commission rules, there's a requirement that any any provider who does not have a contiguous renewal or back-to-back contract would have to wait a six-month period before re-engaging. And so functionally speaking, after the POGO amendment, we would then get to a point where all of our residents would be getting notification letters around May saying that their accounts are going back to ComEd. And then assuming we proceed with this program come likely November, December, the notifications would go out then about the new program going into place.
So then a request, City Manager, when those are taking place, if we can leverage all of the hard work that our communications team has worked on, so that way no one's confused about an account that's moving from one to the other, when ultimately the long-term plan has already been determined by the council and hopefully then with public hearings at the next two meetings?
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you. Yes, Alderman Kohler?
One one comment that did come up in the Environmental Committee meeting, and maybe you can remind me if I'm getting this wrong, but the current aggregation program we, they were discussing, does that have variable rates associated with it? And they, the conversation came up is no, that's not a variable rate structure. Going to the new plan, does it allow for variable rates of the ComEd plans? Could they go to a variable rate? Variable rates are favorable to some people who would like to plug in their hybrid electric cars at night and get the rates really cheap as opposed to plugging them in the middle of the day, and so heading in that direction with things, people were saying, probably needs to go to variable rate, because, you know.
So the program itself is not, so there's two ComEd programs, one is your standard ComEd rate, and then there's an hourly pricing program. Hourly pricing works where every hour ComEd is putting through a rate to customers based on what the then-current price is from the electric distribution grid. It is favorable for people who do use electricity overnight, so if you run your washing machines and laundry machines and you charge overnight, typically overnight hours because there's less demand, and the system has rates at a lower amount. The ComEd standard rate does not fluctuate in that same way, it's just a fixed rate based on an average of the cost to provide that service. Under this proposed program, the people who are on the on the price matching program would not have the hourly. So if anyone wanted to move to the hourly, they would opt out, so a note with this is that anybody can opt out at any time, there isn't a cancellation fee of any sort, you would simply opt out and move back to ComEd, and then from there would be able to move to an hourly rate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Savage.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, we'll move on to our sanitary lateral ownership discussion, and for that, we will defer to Director Public Works Aaron Grassman, and he will present to the council this evening.
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna go ahead and maybe adjust the PowerPoint presentation here? Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and council members, I appreciate your time tonight, it's been a while since I've been up here, and I'm looking forward to our discussion today, and hopefully we'll make this as succinct and quick as possible so we can all get on to our favorite topic, debt policy management. Current practices, so summary of what we're currently doing, very important to know, probably the most crucial thing that we need to understand is what a sanitary lateral actually is. So for those who may not know, sanitary lateral is the pipe that connects your home to the main sanitary line that feeds through the MWRD system. This connects typically all of your sewer and your gray water. And that sanitary line here is in a diagram depicted depicted in red underneath there. One pretty important distinction I'd like to make is the property line actually plays a pretty significant role in this. So currently, what we do is the homeowner maintains kind of routine maintenance throughout the entire sanitary lateral line. The city steps in when The city steps in when there's an issue with the sanitary lateral, possibly an issue with the main, or if any damage or roots or anything causes issues, that happens beyond the property line going to the main. So that is where the city would step in. The homeowner or business is responsible for anything that occurs kind of past that property line outside of the city right-of-way going up to the residence. So a lot of times when an issue occurs, we're not entirely sure where that is. There has to be a lot of investigatory work that occurs beforehand, and then when we can decipher that, we go in and come up with a strategy for the issue here. As far as Rolling Meadows goes, we actually have a very robust resident and business response plan for sanitary issues within Rolling Meadows. So we're pretty proud of it right now, but it's something that we wanted to bring to your attention to make sure that it's a policy that we want to continue with. So direct costs. So this is what the city directly has to pay for, for sanitary lateral-related issues. In 2022 and 2023, we had $47,000 roughly and $26,000 roughly, net perspective, for those current years. That is all direct contractor costs for repairs that happened in the city right-of-way on sanitary laterals. So that's a very important distinction I'd like to make. I would also like to clarify that in another community that this service is not offered to, which is, we'll see in a little bit, most of them, the residents actually own all the way to the main, that onus is on the resident. So they would be responsible for calling in contractors, pulling the permits, giving the quotes, and then if the repair happens to be in the road, they have to pay for the road repair afterwards. So it is a significant burden on the resident to do those. Right now, all those costs are encumbered on the city. Again, each repair can cost up to, could be potentially more depending on the depth of the sanitary line, the sanitary lateral, I should say, as well as the type of soil, the equipment that's needed, the location. So these can go upwards to $20,000 and then some in certain cases. Direct cost repairs conducted by staff, this is a pretty ballpark number. We average in-house repairs for sanitary laterals, around five to seven a year, and we have around $30,000 that we expect that we expend in man-hours, equipment usage, material usage, things of that nature. Typically takes around five guys a full day to make a sanitary lateral repair. Anything that we don't feel comfortable doing, that is below like, pretty in-depth, 15, 16 feet below the ground, we don't really feel comfortable doing in-house, we don't have the equipment, we want to make sure everybody goes home safely, so those types of things that we typically contract out. So what are some proactive capital costs that are upcoming with this? We have around $275,000 scheduled in 2024 for sanitary lateral T-lining. So what T-lining actually does for us, I'm not sure if you can see the small green line here in front of 2408 Sigwalt, that green line is their lateral service. So their lateral service goes from the residence, you can actually see the gray property line, and then everything beyond that green line or beyond that gray line is what the city would be T-lining. And the T-liner is essentially what we would do for our sanitary mains. Goes in, it's a resin, lines it, makes it essentially brand-new for us. So this was a recommended program by RJN, one of our engineering consultants. They do our MWRD annual report, and this is something that's going to help us in the future kind of reduce some of these breaks that we're going to start seeing now that pipes are aging, getting a little bit older. So over five years, we have $825,000 programmed for this. That is a bi-yearly project that we're doing. And then in 10 years, we have around $1.375 million scheduled. And again, this is a recommendation based off RJN. Some other costs that we have associated with this? So one of the requirements to be a Rolling Meadows Public Works member is you have to come up with new and improved ways to increase our service to our residents. And this was one of them that was brought to our attention a little bit ago as part of last year's budgeting process. Didn't quite make it in for 2024, but it's something we're still examining. So currently, we have no way to actually televise a sanitary lateral unless there's a clean-out involved with it, or it's actually attached to a sanitary main. However, this lateral launcher camera actually goes down the main, it can turn its head and shoot down so we can actually see the inside of a sanitary lateral much more quickly and efficiently than we have ever been able to do in the past. So these are types of other costs that we would be seeing upcoming if we wanted to continue with this service, because as I said, we are always looking to improve ways to provide these things to our residents to make us more efficient. Staff time. So what are we investing as far as our staff time? We tried to pull out a lot of the numbers that were just main sanitary calls, that we kind of knew were main sanitary calls, and pull things that were related to sanitary lateral calls specifically for this presentation. So we received since January 1st of 2022, around 142 service requests related to sanitary laterals. Roughly half of those were moved up and had a subsequent follow-up request with the resident or the business owner. Service requests can be anywhere from 20 minutes to an hour, just depends on the situation. If it's quick, and we can check the main to make sure there's no issues there, can be 10, 15 minutes. If it's not, it can be upwards to an hour, we actually have to bring out televising equipment, maybe pop a camera down and clean out, something along those natures. Any reduction in sanitary lateral service programs, so we wanted to move away from this program, would result simply in just increased production in other areas. So we would have more time to visually inspect manholes, we would have more time to televise, we'd have more time to di-test, just do a lot of our regular general upkeep. But that is not to say we would create or add any more programs on, we would just enhance the program that we already have. Similar service levels, so this was a big question. The main question was, who else does this? And the answer is, not very many communities actually provide this level of service to the residents. We surveyed just 10 communities in our immediate region, and eight of them, the resident or business owns the sanitary lateral all the way to the main. One community actually has the sanitary lateral, they own it, all the way up to the house, so onto private property, they're actively going away from that. So they're right now changing that to what the other eight communities have, which is the resident or business owner owns to the main. One other community has a similar service level to Rolling Meadows, and this actually matches up with what a lot of our staff members see throughout kind of Public Works in general. The majority of communities and municipalities do have the residents and business owners own all the way to the main. We are somewhat of a rarity. So council feedback. So what we're looking from you today is, is there any desire to modify the current program, or should we keep moving on as-is and investing our time in capital and hard-earned taxpayer dollars into this program for the future? I'm going to put this question back up, but just let everybody know the presentation is finished. I promise succinct, and I'll fill this back up and hopefully answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Grossbaum. So with that, are there any questions from council? Yes, Alderman Budmats?
Thank you. So I have several questions. The maintenance that's required for this, which is the owner responsibility, I have to be honest, I haven't been doing the maintenance with my lateral in front of my house, I have no idea how to do the maintenance. What is the maintenance that needs to be done to the lateral?
Sure. So there's a couple things. So you could, one, you can generally just televise it or have a plumbing contractor come out and televise the line. Two, you can rot it out just to make sure that it's clean, there's no roots or anything blocking up. And three, you could jet it out if you wanted to, but that's probably unnecessary if you can televise and just kind of see through. You're not alone. A lot of residents probably don't think of that to handle, just like water, right? You go in, you turn the faucet on, water comes out, it works, you don't worry about it until the toilet doesn't flush anymore. Now it's number-one priority on everybody, and everybody is going to be an expert on how the sanitary line works.
So the second question is, how reasonable is it for us to assume that residents are going to maintain beyond their property line and go all the way to the city main?
How reasonable is it to assume?
Yeah.
As far as, as far as the routine maintenance goes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. A lot of times when you're having somebody come in and rot something out, the major cost is going to be having them come out and initially perform the task. The length of it is not going to add substantially increased cost. For example, a lot of the contractors, we have $180, they'll be able to come out and rot out your entire sanitary lateral.
Okay. Third question. What about the water supply? Where does it, where does that stop and start by comparison to the sanitary sewer? So is it the same place? Is it the property line, or where is it?
Typically, it goes to the B-box, and then from there, it would go in, it would be the homeowner's responsibility to handle the main into the house, or what they would call the, basically the water lateral into the house. So the B-box is typically on the right-of-way line, that's where we go.
So the P-box is typically on the property line? Okay. And then lastly, if we were going to televise it, that would be like between city council meetings on Channel 6, or where would we televise it?
That would be a great place. It might garner a lot of attention. So when I say televise, I mean run a camera through, and then either way, you would have a live feed into, well, we have a televising van, so they can actually go in, live feed, stream, not on Channel 6 unfortunately, but they can actually view what is currently happening in the pipe. And then contractors sometimes may have just a camera with an SD card in it, they can run it through, bring it back, and then pull out that SD card, put it in a computer and view the, what the camera picked up.
So are we able, are we going to share that with contractors? I guess is the real question, like, if it's televised, it's a public document that somebody can look at and see?
We do share with contractors. So if we have a resident that calls in and has a sanitary lateral issue, and our team can actually go in with the, through a clean-out and televise it, we can share that with the contractor if we find that there's root clogs on the private property portion of it, and if it's on the city property side, then obviously we would maintain it.
Thank you.
Any other questions from, yes, Alderman and Kohler?
So these laterals, when you say 1.5 million over 10 years or whatever the number was, what percentage of our sanitary laterals would be covered by that?
What percentage of the sanitary, it's hard to say how much percentage we could get. It really depends on the program that we're running and how long those laterals are. So if we do, we have a heavy program with a lot of 50-foot laterals, we're going to get less coverage than we would if we had a program where there's a lot of 20-foot kind of shorter lateral connections. We would identify those by going through areas that we sanitary, that we actually line with our main sanitary lining program, and then move to do the laterals as recommended by our consultants and the contractors that do the work. But I don't have an actual percentage of how much over 10 years we would be able to get, but I could probably get that information for you.
So are these laterals things that are part of the original Rolling Meadows installation?
Most of them are.
So they're going to be coming up for needing to be worked on going forward as the city is whatever age it is, right? I'm going to just put my opinion out there that we maintain the same program, maintaining the laterals. I know that there have been major conflicts within the unincorporated area where they don't do that, and ends up lawsuits neighbor to neighbor over, you're not fixing the park by you, so I'm getting affected by it. So as long as you keep it back to, your house is the only one affected if you don't fix it. But there have been, in the unincorporated areas, neighbor versus neighbor in threatening lawsuits and everything over the fact that the lateral is not covered, it's within the residents to work that up amongst themselves. So I would not put that forth to our president. We'll take laterals, they take it from their house to the lateral.
Yes, Alderman.
I was gonna say, I'm in full support, continue, that's one of the biggest kudos I get from residents is, oh my gosh, I didn't even know we had this service, and so I had to call, and there was no charge, I saw on the camera, so no, that is one. And this is just an idea for down the road, too. Since we're looking at when we're doing just regular street work, I'm kind of comparing to regular street work and the tie-ins and things like that, when we get to the point of lining, it might be cost prohibitive for a resident, but I've always heard, like, from our clean-out, we check every like two or three years, we try and get it by on, is that, I guess a lot of them are real old, like the original infrastructure. Is there any way we could offer, and if you're doing a stretch on Sigwalt, using your picture example, of the lining, that we could also offer to residents that have a lateral? Is that even possible, that if the residents passed, if they wanted to line their portion of the lateral to main while the contractors were out there, it might be $10,000, so a lot of residents would probably say, no, thank you?
Yeah.
I don't know, because those are A2s, my best. Because any clean-outs and any of the clay tiles I've heard and stuff, I don't even know what they are, but...
I was going to say, Director Grossbaum, before you answer that question, so unfortunately, Alderman, if you see on Alderman Boucher couldn't make it here this evening, but their wards, as well as Ward 3 and portions of Ward 7 on the east side, are very familiar with this particular issue. I'm sure if we had a map of the amounts of calls of service, that's probably where we will see them. If you drive in that neighborhood, you'll see a lot of wishing wells in the front of those homes. They are covering a access point for these clean-outs. So this is pretty routine maintenance for these particular neighborhoods. So when Alderman O'Brien is referring to the actual materials themselves, they are older materials that will require maintenance, currently require maintenance, and if there is a blockage, can actually be catastrophic to the homeowner as far as a backup. So I just wanted to provide that context and see if you can color that as well.
Thank you.
As long as the mulch doesn't get into the clean-out anyhow, that's the key.
Mark is right on that.
I'm sure. Yeah, he's very good about that. As far as kind of providing a service to when we go do the T-liners for the laterals, extending that, you're referring to extending that all the way up to the residence for the homeowner, is something that I think we could probably talk with the contractor about to see if that's a potential that they would want to do. I know it's a similar service when we have a paving contractor come through. We kind of put it out to the contractor, if they're open to it, they'll do the driveway of the person, but that would be on the residence, obviously. So it would be similar to that. I know we have the sanitary lining bid out now to the MPI, and once that comes back and we have a contractor, we'll actually be able to talk with them and see if that's a possibility.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from council regarding this program? Okay, then we'll go to a straw vote as far as if there is any desire from the council to decrease, remove service from this program. No desire from the council. And from Alderman O'Brien, there was a request, in fact, to increase city service to see if we can expand our current MPI with the contractor so that maintenance can actually be included in the laterals.
At the resident's.
At the resident's expense, yes. That's unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And this brings us to our fourth and final item of the evening regarding our debt management policy. And to that, we will defer to Finance Director Molly Talkington.
You, Mayor and Council, I think I need Director Grossbaum in front of me every time to hype up finance for everyone, right? Because debt management is really important. So that's what we're going to talk about tonight, putting in together, or putting a policy in place for the city on debt management. Why? We don't have one, right? So as part of our fiscal stability plan, we looked at different things we could do to kind of build the foundation. We've implemented some of those steps. This is one of them, looking at our policies. So tonight, it's debt management. A big thing on this one is, while we have a good rating with our bond rating, right, we're AA-plus, stable outlook, you know, we fund our pensions well, we're, you have very low debt, they did highlight in our last rating that we don't have a policy for pension or a policy for debt. So tonight's debt pension's coming. It's our next policy we're going to tackle. But really, trying to put a policy in place hopefully will be positive in our next debt rating review and help us kind of move up into the bond rating status. And of course, every time we inch up on bond rating means usually lower interest, so it's more favorable for the city when we look at debt. And this would just really policy would be formalizing those guidelines that I know have been used when they were recommended for debt before in the past, but now we'll have something to look to. So some of the key points here, right, we're not issuing debt for our regular operating expenses. So the everyday business of the city, that's not where we're looking. We're going to focus on capital. We'll look at other revenue sources, which was part of the stability plan, right? We looked at our enterprise funds with this current budget, and how do we fund the operations there? We look to other revenues, right, the rates in those funds. So debt wouldn't be an option for that type of expense for the city. We will always look at our, the current rating metrics that's out there and in place, you know, what do we need? You know, what do we need to kind of tweak or um, focus on? Because uh, standards and pores and Moody's do occasionally update what their kind of metrics is. And then, you know, we're really focusing on capital projects with a larger uh, dollar value. So if it's less than half a million, we're going to look to try to put some projects together, right? Each time you issue debts, there's issuance costs. So you don't really want to focus on that smaller amount. We'll look at pay it should go or, you know, we've been successful in the utility funds, looking at I E P A loans. So different avenues to fund if it's a smaller um, project mount. So or part, or kind of putting the projects together to come up to a larger amount in one debt issuance. We're looking at no longer than a thirty year period, um, really or shorter on how long that debt will be. It's really going to tie to what's the useful life. We're looking at whatever project we're doing. Um, and then debt repayment will be structured with level or declining debt service. Uh, if there's reasons to do it differently, we'll bring that to council at that time. Um, and some of that could just be looking at our existing debt, right? We just had one kind of come off uh, our rolls. But if you, you know, if you look at the ladder of how our debt is, there's going to, sometimes there's kind of a peak. And so maybe you're structuring the net stack to keep that peak lower and then um, kind of level out the debt for the next year. So there's different reasons to look at that. And again, it'd be brought to council and we are going through that at a debt issuance. And then of course, potential benefits we'll look at from issuing bank qualified bonds. Um, you'll look at the call provisions, uh, you know, flexibility of, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to refinance the debt. We'll get lower uh, interest if a few years down the line, the economic climate in which we're in changes. So trying to keep kind of all of these options open when we're looking to issue debt for the city. Look to fixed rate first. Again, variable might be an option, but again, we'll have a justification there of why that would be the more sound at the time to recommend that. And kind of keep that at a lower amount of our total debt. And of course derivative products are are just not something that's permissible for the city. So we wouldn't allow that. Financial assistance in projects like with our TIF funding. Um, it really benefits typically financial assistance requested by one developer or one, maybe two developers. So looking at the justification of a need for the city to issue debt that would benefit a smaller uh, kind of a smaller window in our city. So that would just come with more justification of why we would recommend that if we were at the time. But it'll just kind of have a secondary, you know, filter to go through for that issuance. And then the other thing is like, what's our ratio to debt to what we have available? So um, we're trying to capitalize on our annual governmental funds that the debt will be capped at seven percent of the value of our taxable property. And then for enterprise, we'll have a coverage at least one point oh of the individual enterprise funds. Now, this is, um, I'm going to show you the math. We'll go to the next page. So right now, our current outstanding debt is twenty-two million. And you can see down at the bottom, it's broken into enterprise and governmental. Fifteen point five for governmental, enterprise is six point seven million. So what does that mean for governmental? Our governmental debt ratio, our twenty twenty-two equalized assessed valuation is just over a billion. So our proposed limit is seven percent of that, so seventy million. And our current debt is fifteen point five. So we're only utilizing twenty-two percent. We are lower on where we could be um, in the debt ratio coverage. Enterprise, the debt ratio is different, right? We're looking at kind of governmental versus what the enterprise fund's supposed to be businesslike in nature. So trying to look at where do we want the debt versus the revenues we bring in specifically for that fund. Okay, so our um, utilities fund for twenty twenty-three, the unotted revenues were eleven point four million dollars. And I took out our one time ARPA parallel funding, because that's one time in nature, kind of stands out a little bit different. So I backed that one up. And our total debt is six point seven million. So right now, our requirement in this policy would be have one point oh times revenue versus our debt, which we do have, because currently we have one point seven times available in our revenue. So again, we're sitting very well. We're a very low debt community compared to others. But putting these ratios in place are kind of giving people an understanding of where we are compared to different things the city has. So equalize assessed value, the value of the city versus what we have in debt or the value of the revenue of that enterprise fund versus what we have in debt. And that are really the key parameters of this debt management policy. Um, the direction we're asking for tonight is, you know, any feedback we receive tonight, we can, you know, of course, go through and alter if needed or come back to council with the proposed um, debt management policy you have before you and bring it back for formal adoption. So now it's time for any discussion and questions.
Thank you, Director Talkington. Um, are there any questions regarding the proposed parameters of this debt management policy this evening from the council? Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
This just might be a theoretical one, like the one point oh times or things like, is that like set by Moody's or S and P? Or like if we wanted to become, I guess I'm going to say more aggressive. I think you're like, if we wanted to do like, we're at one point seven, so we say council wants to do one point five. Like those are just best practices in municipality to have that amount of debt to ratio like, or is it set by?
It's not set, there isn't um, you know, one recommended way to look at the ratio. So what I did is luckily we can use our neighboring communities and, you know, the state of Illinois actually has some policies in place and looking at kind of the window of what was out there. Um, and what seemed to be a little bit, I'd say more on the conservative side for the city, uh, than I put in the recommendations. There are some where, you know, the state, they can do things like eight point seven five percent. So they're a little bit higher than we are. Um, if you look at Rockford, they actually take that and reduce it by a certain percentage, which actually is very similar to the seven percent. So we're a little bit more conservative. Um, in these recommendations, again, it's a policy we can put in place. You know, when we come to a debt need, we can look at this and and if for some reason the parameters they're set now don't, you know, fit the city's needs, we can always come back and revise policy too.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Kohler.
So these are going to be stupid questions because I don't understand the government. Um, but what's the difference between a policy and an ordinance? Is this stuff in the ordinances of the city that we maintain a certain level or number or?
So we're a home rule city.
Yeah.
So as a home rule city, you don't actually have to have um, a policy set in place for debt. You're open to kind of take on as much debt as as you would like as a city council. Um, this is just putting parameters in place for us. It's also recommended by the rating agencies because then there's something they can look to to see, are you really following the intent um, that you had set in a policy? And then if you are, you know, they always look at that ratio. Right now we're below both of the ones that are proposed. That would actually help us with the stable outlook. It would look favorable upon the city.
Okay, so there's nothing in the city ordinances that says we have to have a certain debt ratio that we must maintain or anything? We can do whatever, we can run this up if we want or we can.
Well, I mean, as is, but the proposal.
A policy isn't an ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
An ordinance is the equivalent of the city's law.
That's the law.
Right.
So a policy is guidelines.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Trying to get at what we're trying to improve here in ordinance. Are we actually going to an ordinance or just a policy?
So I bring this back as policy as a resolution for council, so it wouldn't come back as an ordinance.
Thank you. That's that's just where this is going. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Budmats.
So I'm curious as to how the shortfalls in our pension funding would fit into this scenario. Are they considered a debt? Are they not considered a debt? And 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 how do we, how do we factor those into this equation?
So pension funding is not considered a debt in the manner that's described here. So the debt management policy doesn't cover kind of the actuarial recommended funding and the state requirements for pension funding. Um, they're really separate. And when you look at it in both bond regi- rating agencies, look at it separate. Which is why this is just really focused on debt as if you were taking out a home loan or a car loan, right? Um, where the pension policy, that'll come next. And then it'll kind of formalize the guidelines that city council's been working under now, looking at funding at a hundred percent, not, you know, the state required ninety percent by twenty forty, that um, um, trying to reach, I think the goal was uh, seventy percent funded quicker than the hundred percent funded. So there were some things that, all of that will be kind of the next step of finance to put together a policy specific for police and fire pensions that then will, I think, help strengthen kind of where we stand with bond rating agencies. So it'd be really two separate policies dictating kind of those two um, worlds. So it's not pension funding and where we're, uh, our goals for funding are not included within debt as the definition here.
In other words, we wouldn't issue a bond to be for uh, outstanding pension liability. The way that pension funds typically are managed are through the city's authority through its taxation mechanisms. Um, whereas the bond issuances, which is what this debt management policy pertains to, would be for um, infrastructure, capital improvements, things of that nature that we can amortize um, and and use that type of an approach with respect to a large capital purchase. Um, whereas for our pension systems, we work through our tax approach. But we'll, our plan is to put together, as Molly, uh, Director Talkington had said, a formalized approach so that while we have this guideline and we've referenced it many times, the policy itself will make it finite. And obviously that can be always amended, but it'll be a document that if any one of us moves on or transitions, there's always that set document that could be referred back to.
But I'm assuming that the reading agencies look at our funding percentages before they give us an A A plus rating, right?
Correct.
Yeah, pension liability is really looked at heavily in reading agencies.
So shouldn't there be some kind of tie in between the two that that says we're not going to go out and blow blow fifty million dollars on a new building unless we've, unless we are at least funded to a certain percentage in our pension shortfalls? I I'm just curious.
So I think because of how liquid and dynamic finance is year to year, I don't know that we would want to tie ourselves to a a finite statement like that where, you know, the city council binds itself from being able to take certain steps if it would like to or based on the economic conditions at a certain time. Um, you know, I I defer to our finance director as far as how we would approach satisfying that element. Um, typically when you go through the bond rating process, uh, Moody's, Fitch, all the different entities will take a look at a factor of a variety of different elements. And what they're looking for with your pension li- pension liabilities is that you have a plan and that you're adhering to it. I think the most important thing isn't that you are a hundred percent funded at a certain point, except for what the state statutory requirement is. It's that you have a a plan to get to that hundred percent funding or ninety percent funding by twenty forty. Absent of that, or if you have a demonstrated history of not adhering to that, underfunding your pension, those are scenarios in which you could look at it, potentially a downgrade in your debt rating. But as so, as long as you have a plan in place and you are actively showing and demonstrating that you are making steps towards it, the debt rating agencies will look at outstanding unfunded pension liability and be okay with that so long as there's a plan to get to it. Um, an example of that, in one of my previous uh, employers, um, we were uh, about fifty-eight percent funded. That was a, we were rated a triple A um, organization because the city had demonstrated in a finite approach to how we were going to continue increasing our funding. Um, and as the debt rating, debt rating agency evaluated our entire financial uh, health of the community, determined that the city had performed the things that it said it would do in that policy. And under that historical reference and that plan, determined that the city's financial and health and strength was um, was in good shape and therefore awarded a triple A. So um, if you have a plan and you're working towards it, that's what the debt rating agencies are looking for.
I would add just one more thing. Annually, we do look at pensions and debt together, right? So when we come to you with the city's uh, property tax levy, those two things are kind of a big focus when we look at that levy. So you do have an annual look and with that together every year of where we stand.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this policy? Okay, then are you looking for a straw vote regarding this or any other types of feedback?
Just a straw vote if you'd like to proceed with what uh, the proposed was written.
Okay, so as stated from Director Talkington, all those in favor? Have you seen a straw vote approval?
Thank you.
So we'll bring this back on a formal agenda for formal adoption by resolution.
With that, uh, those were our four items on the agenda this evening. I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Killip for the first and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it and this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-one P M.